Alderman to order, if you would, please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Franklin. Alderman Franklin. Alderman Mills is excused. Mayor's airing. Present. All right, thank you. We have a forum. Ceremonial matters. We have a police department badge pending. I think Chief, you're gonna... Oh, there you are. Okay, you moved on me. All right, come on up.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to introduce to you Detective Peter Sumner. He came to the Harrisville Police Department in July of 2022, and since he's been with us, he has been a patrol officer, an SRO, and recently was promoted to detective. Tonight, we have with him his parents, his father Steve, his mother Sandy, and he'll be pinned this evening by his girlfriend Bree.
All right.
You got one more to do?
Oh, we got one more. I thought we had one. All right, go ahead, continue on. I'll come back down. I didn't realize we had two of them.
All right, are we on? All right, good evening, mayor and board. I'd like to introduce to you our newest patrol sergeant, Tim Michelson. Sergeant Michelson started with HPD in 2015, and he left us for a little bit in 2021 because he believed the grass was a little greener in Big Lake Police Department, Minnesota. After a year-long stint at Big Lake PD, he realized his mistake and came back to HPD begging for his amazing job back. In 2022, he began working with HPD again, and we were very glad to have him back. Sergeant Michelson has served as a patrol officer, field training officer, corporal, drug recognition expert, and a mentor to our new officers coming into law enforcement. Sergeant Michelson recently took the promotional exam and interview and finished on top. Congratulations Sergeant Michelson on this awesome achievement. He will now have his new sergeant badge pinned upon his uniform by his father, John Michelson.
All right, I'm just gonna check. We don't have another one, do we? Are we good? All right. Always good to have the PD here. All right, next up, we have public participation. We had an agenda request from Timothy Warren. Sir, if you can step on up, tell us your name and address.
You have three minutes to address the board. I'll warn you when you have one minute remaining.
Okay, you want me to say it again?
And we didn't start your time yet, so...
Timothy Warren, 1305 South Main Street, and the reason I'm here is the no parking on the east side of my street. I wasn't aware that this was even being done till the other day, and when my neighbor called and said it was happening. But the problem I'm gonna have is if you do that on my street, because of the way it's set up, I'm gonna have one car two houses down this way and another car two houses down this way on the opposite side of the street. Because we're across from my house, there's two driveways. I can't just move my vehicles across the street. We have homeless people walking up and down our street. It's the expressway up and down through town, so they can stay off the main roads. I've already had my vehicles ransacked. I have my cameras set up for my house, and I can't set them up for going up and down the street. And it's ridiculous. I have some pictures here. The majority of the people, except maybe two or three households, park on the east side of the street, not the west. The west side has a sidewalk. If you run the cars up and down it, now you're gonna have people cutting in from the sidewalk through the cars that go across the street, and that's less safe than the way you guys are wanting to do it now. It's not blocking any fire hydrants. The fire hydrant that in question is at a four-way stop, so you can't park there anyway. The one further down the street is in a driveway. You're not gonna block their driveway. Like I said, I have these pictures here, because you guys can go to my house and look at it. So I don't know if you guys wanna pass them around, or how you wanna do it.
Yep, start them down there at the end and pass them around, sir.
Basically, the first bunch is South Street looking south down my street. And I will say also that if EMS has to make a run down my street, they're gonna come from the north, because they are from the north. They'll never come from the south. So if you guys make them park on the west side, they're gonna be driving on the left side, and that's less safe.
One minute remaining.
That's less safe than driving down the main drag towards the stop sign. So I don't know how else to express it, but I don't think you guys wanna park your cars two houses down from your house, especially when you have homeless people and children in the neighborhood that could mess with them. I have two vehicles in the street, a camper in the driveway. You won't let me pull my camper beside the garage because I don't have a driveway. I don't own, so I'm not gonna pay the money to put a driveway in. That'd be ridiculous. So I'm just, I mean, looking for some leniency. If you don't... The road's 28 feet wide. You guys can't forgive two feet. If you look at the pictures, you'll see there's no reason why a fire truck can't get down the road if you just make it parking on both sides the way it has been for years. I've been there two years, and not a single fire truck or ambulance has been down my street. And we're lucky to see the police department.
Thank you. That's three minutes.
Okay, I do have... Can I get a little bit more? Because I do have something else to say on the safety.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
All right. Three more?
As far as... I know it's a safety factor, and you wanna be able to get in the school buses. They fly them down the road, so I don't know why they were even involved in this as far as, you know, their board, whatever they put into it. I've called twice. Actually, Daniel here had an officer come to my house for a complaint that I had, because the first one didn't get satisfied that there's several neighbors that are running the four-way stop. The officer that showed up in my house, his explanation was, "They're too busy. They're shorthanded. They can't come out and take care of that and maybe sit there and start throwing some tickets out. So if we don't care about the safety of the children at the four-way stop, why are we worried about where we park?" Okay, that don't make no sense to me, and I really didn't like that answer. So on a different agenda, you guys need to take care of that. But these pictures are for the Percival's. This is the common street down their street showing how clear it is with the parking, and that's the way it always is. Now you wanna move all the cars to cross the other side of the street. And like I said, in those pictures, mine's the camper, and you can see the driveways on the other side. And then I would be... My neighbor's house to the south of me, I would be parking across the road from her house. I can't make my cameras. I've got four cameras set up in my house. I can't go be buying more. It's only held... It's set up for four. You know, and I have to look out, look down the street just to see if my cars are okay and look down the other way. I can't do that. I already have one trailer in storage I pay for. I don't wanna have to kick another $100 a month just because of a no parking deal for my camper. And then I still gotta find a place for another vehicle. It's either that or people just don't drive and come to my house.
One minute remaining.
I don't know what else to say. But like I said, I don't think you guys wanna park your cars down the street.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next up, agenda request. Allison and Jacob Percival. Can you step up? Again, both your names and address, please.
Allison Percival, 1501 Main Street.
Jacob Percival, also 1501 Main Street.
And good evening. Thanks for hearing us this evening, mayor and aldermen. I have put together a petition with my neighbors on both sides of my street from Independence to South Street. And I wrote, "I'm a resident of Harrisonville, Missouri, and like others in our community, I rely on available parking on South Main. Recently, the city decided to install no parking signs on the east side to ensure there's a clear path for emergency vehicles and buses to travel without impedance and have a clear line of sight. With new signs in place, residents may have to park a significant way from their home. Residents on the west side of the street will be impacted by the shift of vehicles to that side of the street, also impacting where they may park. South Main has a significant amount of non-resident foot traffic, and if residents' vehicles are not near their home, it will become difficult to monitor our own personal property. This change forever puts... Therefore, puts residents' personal property at risk. Limited west-side parking is not sufficient to meet the demands of our street's residents. For some walking long distances to and from their parked vehicles is not convenient, but is not only inconvenient, but potentially perilous. So we put together this petition, and I can turn it into whoever I need to turn it into. South Main Street, we're a pretty quiet street, and all our neighbors get along really well. I can't imagine if we all are forced to park on the opposite side of the street that that'll continue to be the case."
Yeah, I just had some things to add about the street width. Our most of down the street from curb to curb is approximately 28 feet wide. And with the maximum distance of any snowplow bus, fire truck is at max 13 feet with a large snowplow. Width of a large SUV is six feet, so 12 and 13 is 25 feet. So there should be plenty of travel space for those vehicles. It is not an emergency snow route. There's approximately 20 vehicles that at any given time park, that utilize street parking. We've got a lot of teenage drivers. There just isn't space in driveways for their vehicles. And to echo kind of what Tim said, emergency vehicles coming down South Street makes a whole lot more sense for them to have a line of sight down their lane of travel versus having to go around all of those vehicles.
In our house, we have four driving-age children. And we do have a double lot that we pay our property tax on, and so it would... That would move four drivers to the opposite side of the street.
Thank you. That's three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming out and talking to the board. We appreciate that, for sure. Okay, next up, we have the approval of minutes from the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, August 5th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Chaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those stand. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen Work Session, August 5th, minutes.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh. All right, those stand approved. First up, on the agenda items, we have Council Bill Number 47.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, approving the reappointment of Amanda Stites and Obie Carl to the Harrisonville Square Neighborhood Redevelopment Corporation.
All right, so I bring before you tonight two great citizens that do a lot for our city, volunteer, do a lot of volunteer work. Obie Carl, I don't see Amanda. She's not here, is she? Okay, but we got Obie Carl in here. I bring both of them to you again. Highly qualified, highly recognized. They do a lot for our city. Obie, did you have anything you would like to say?
I think the 353 is a very, very good program, and we started to do good participation.
All right, we appreciate all your work on that as well. You guys have done a great job with that, so... So, yep, we bring them...
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Davidson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Council Bill Number 47 is now Resolution 2024-24. Next, we have the second reading for Council Bill Number 46.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending Article I and Appendix A land use table under Chapter 405 zoning regulations in Article I under Chapter 600 intoxicating liquor of the Harrisonville Municipal Code and establishing an effective date.
All right, Christina.
Keep this short. I have nothing new to add. We have not received any phone calls or emails or any inquiries on these proposed amendments.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
All right.
On second.
Motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Fauch. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
Thank you. Council Bill Number 46 is now Ordinance 3702. Next, we have an administrative Council Bill Number 48.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, amending the operating budget for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024, and establishing an effective date.
Awesome. Jeremy.
Good evening, mayor and board. In front of you tonight is just another example of us trying to make sure we can get through to the end of the year, trying to take care of a few things. Through some of the... One of the not big expenses, but big things that you'll see is some repairs to the fire department roof. They had a company come out and do a, what I would say was a very good inspection of that, and there were some repairs that they felt like they could take care of now that would extend the lives of those roofs. They also gave us a potential long-term replacement date for those, which unfortunately is not as far out as I would like it to be. But we did wanna get those repairs moved forward. We didn't wanna have... They took care of some things that were immediate needs, because they were actually already having some problems in the area that was just remodeled. So we wanted to take care of that. In there as well is the water rate study. And then there was also, I think Grant had something in there for a grant application that had been... That needed... I'm trying to find my notes here. The right thing. What was it called, Grant? That's it, the sidewalk grant. And so... Yeah, and then the... Yes. The... To add the rest of the monies back for the general code, for all the code amendments that have been happening, those all have to be codified and put on the website, and those things, we've been through a lot this year, and that will continue. Christina is usually busy. Patty's pretty busy. And so those things, we needed a little more money in that budget to be able to fund those through the rest of the year. And if anybody has any questions.
All right, thank you, sir.
It's not a big one.
Any questions for Jeremy? If not, seeing no questions, I'll entertain... Again, this is an administrative ordinance.
Make a motion to suspend the rule and take it to a second reading.
All right, got a motion from Alderman Dorhoff.
Second.
With a second from Alderman Milner to suspend a rule on Council Bill Number 48 and take it to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
Right, second reading.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, amending the operating budget for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024, and establishing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill Number 48 is now Ordinance 3703. Next up, we have a public hearing to reverse prior reduction in tax levy. I'm gonna open that public hearing now, and I believe that is... Jeremy, you're up again.
Yes, sir, and I have Kim here if anybody has any questions, and Ben Hart is also on the meeting. So what we're trying to accomplish here is that in the 2015 calendar year for the 2016 tax year, there was a... The board decided to reduce, not reduce, but stay level at the tax levy of the time. And then every year since then, we receive a pro forma. And usually, we fight with the state to get that pro forma in time to actually have the levy done by the September 1st deadline. So that pro forma comes to us with two different calculations on it. One is the tax levy that is as the state would predict it with our past levy. The other is the reduced levy for, based on the fact that we took what they would consider a reduction at that time. In the past, this has caused some confusion about which levy we should process. And when we looked at that pro forma this year, we realized that there is a way to get back to what we consider the normal levy rate. And so Kim reached out to the state. We've worked through with them through this process, which is public hearing, send them the ordinance, and then have the regular tax rate. The difference of that has been calculated, and we estimate that to be about a penny per hun... I think it's per hundred there, for a total difference to, you know, like an $80,000 home would be $1.76 per year. The total difference in costs is... Or total difference in revenue to the city is about $23,000. It's not a significant change, but it is a change that we felt like, one, would bring us back to current, so there'd be less confusion. At some point in the not terribly distant future, Kim's gonna probably retire. Someday in the medium distant future, I will retire.
I told her I would revoke Kim.
Yeah, we don't want Kim to retire. But there is confusion with how this works with the state, and as those people that have not been here to know those things and how they transpired, you wouldn't just natively know. The state does not tell you which one you choose. They tell you, based on your experience, choose the one that's right for you. And it's confusing. We've... I know that in a couple of years, we've had some issues with that in the ordinance, where we put in there the wrong one. We had to correct it. So we're asking the board if that is what you want us to do. Do you want us to go and continue to go through this process and bring back the levy to the current rate that it's set at? The state sends us both every year. It's not a significant difference, but it is... There is a difference there.
All right.
It's really confusing the way the state makes us do it. So the process is the state auditor's office sends it to the county, tells the county, "Here's this form. Do all this." Send it to the city. City then fills out the form, and now we have two different ones that we're trying to work with. Then we send it back to the county, and then the county sends it back to the state. Then the state says, "This is what your levy should be," sends it to the county. The county sends it to us. Which it would be a whole lot easier if they just tell us from the beginning, "Tell us what it is," and that's where we should be. But evidently, we're helping the post office.
So, and just as an anecdotal thing, and this will happen either way, regardless of what you decide to do with the current levy, is that our assessed on... Assessment on personal property is about $4 million less this year than last. That is due to some changes in the way that the, I believe it's the county, was valuing those vehicle assets, this change in their contract. And so that's a significant difference in that for us, it was mostly made up on the other side from the rise in the value of property, of real estate. So this is designed so that we can't actually make significantly more money. We are held to a pretty tight level on this. It will always be relatively the same based on state law. But just so you know, when we do bring that forward, regardless of what that rate is, you will see a significant reduction in personal property values. And so there will be less of that brought forward. That does affect the rate, the levy as well. So the levy can go up and down based on the amount of assessed value.
So the origin of this goes back 10 years?
Almost 10 years, yes, sir.
And I didn't understand what happened nine years ago.
They decided for reasons of the board at the time to hold the current levy static and not take the state's recommendation for what the levy should be. You can't... You can only raise it to their maximum, but you can take a voluntary reduction.
Okay. Has caused confusion ever since?
To a certain extent, yes.
Okay, so the ordinance is to rescind that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Jeremy, or we got Ben Hart on the line, like he said. Kim's here as well, so...
I said, it said that we send a letter to the state, ask, tell them why. I mean, is that... We just said we don't wanna be more confusing, or...
No, I mean, ultimately, there is a difference in revenue here. And so with the status of many of the budgets we have, we felt like it was the appropriate time to bring that forth and say, "Look, if we, you know, if we want to bring this back to current at what the state allows, then this..." Because you have to do it in an even-numbered year. And so we're doing our due diligence by bringing it to you to make that decision.
Right. I mean, it just said that we had to submit the approved ordinance along with the letter stating why the city wants to increase the tax levy. And I just agree with what we sent to the state, since it wasn't included.
We haven't sent anything to the state yet. They have to have the ordinance passed, and then the state still has to say if they're going to allow it or not.
Okay.
That's correct.
So the state still has to allow it? I mean...
Yes. And they would not tell us that they would... They would provide no guarantee that they would allow it, only that this was the process, mostly the process to follow.
Any other questions?
I guess I got... I don't know.
Yes, sir.
So if the state's gonna change it anyways, so why are we doing this?
We are required by law to set the levy every year and have that enacted by September 1st. Yes, sir. They allow a certain amount of the levy to reach to that level. So based on a certain valuation, they create that calculation that gets us to basically a flat number over time. Yes, sir.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on anything on this? Okay, there's no more questions, no more input, then I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Jeremy, Kim, and Mr. Hart, being prepared on that. And then we're going to go into, it's an administrative ordinance. That'll be Council Bill forty, number forty-nine.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, intending to reverse past tax levy reduction and bring Harrisonville's tax levy rate back to what it would have been had no voluntary reduction been taken.
Any further questions? And it is an, an ordinance, so.
Make a motion to suspend the rule, take it to a second reading.
All right, got a, a motion from Alderman Davidson to suspend a rule on Council Bill number forty-nine. Take it to a second reading with a second from Alderman Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Nay.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill number forty-nine is, oh, I'm sorry, second reading.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, intending to reverse past tax levy reduction and bring Harrisonville's tax levy rate back to what it would have been had no voluntary reduction been taken.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Nay.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
Okay, now, Council Bill number forty-nine is Ordinance three-seven-zero-four. All right, next up, a public hearing on code amendment cruelty to animals. I'm going to open that public hearing. And I think, Jesse, were you gonna, is Jesse here, or? Okay, Kristin, okay. Were you going to talk on that a little bit, Christina?
Apologize. Jesse was here, was going to speak on this item, but I, we were told this was going to be tabled, so I think she left. This item was brought to you in a work session at the last board meeting. A lot of the information here is the same as what you saw previously. In fact, I don't think there was any change to the packet as far as that goes. At a high level, we've had a lot of calls and a lot of inquiries about animals being left within hot vehicles. Summer's been pretty hot. It's finally starting to cool back down. We'll see how long that stays. We've even had calls from police departments as well. There's been at least one animal I know of, has been told to me, has died from being left in a hot vehicle. This amendment was researched across the state and across the country, looking at other municipalities and then comparing what is and isn't done, looking at state statute, and trying to address that issue as best we can within those confines.
All right, thank you, Christina. Any questions for Christina on this? This is a public hearing. Anybody from the audience have anything, any input, anything to say? All right, seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing on that, and we will go to Council Bill number fifty, first reading.
An ordinance to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, amending Article One under Chapter two-ten Animal Regulations of the Harrisonville Municipal Code and establishing an effective date.
Make a motion to table until the September sixteenth meeting and have it work session the next meeting.
All right, got a motion from Alderman Davidson to table until September sixteenth meeting with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills is excused.
All right, thank you. So we will come back seven, September sixteenth for the work session on that.
Second. Second.
Or, I'm sorry, the second, yes, and then back September sixteenth, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, next up, we have application number PP dash twenty-four dash zero-one dash A preliminary plat for Cedar Crossing lots one through two-twenty-seven and tracks A and B located south of Parkwood South and north of two-hundred-and-sixty-seventh Street. Christina.
Apologize. You'll notice that both of these items don't have attachments to them as is usual for my items. That's because these were already noted for this hearing date, and in between trying to pull things together, we realized that the applicant needed to work with staff some more to get it to the finish line. And one of those things that we're working on is trying to pull together a draft development agreement that would be before you in that packet. So we are requesting that this be continued to a date certain of October seventh. The plan zoning continued it to their November, not November, sorry, September nineteenth meeting. And so basically pushing it a month to get caught up.
Okay, thank you, Christina. So that'll be continued to October seventh.
Correct.
Okay, and you might as well stay up there, because I think you got the next one, too. That's a application number RZ PDP dash twenty-four dash zero-one, a rezoning of approximately seven acres from RP one to RP two, and preliminary development plan for twenty-four duplex lots and two-hundred, two-hundred-and-three single-family residential lots located south of Parkwood South and north of two-hundred-and-sixty-seventh Street.
So part of the same project, like I said, the other one was a plat. This is the rezoning development plan related to that. So same issue, same, same deal, trying to work with the applicant on getting some things straightened out and getting a development agreement drafted.
All right, thank you, and we'll continue that one on October seventh as well.
Yes.
Thanks, Christina.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Alderman and committee reports. We'll start with Alderman Chaney.
It's a good day to be a wildcat.
It's a great day to be a wildcat.
Kids learn back to school. My kids, I've got two in elementary, and they came home happy and have a wonderful day, thankful. And they are thankful to be back to school, so pray the kids learn well, teachers stay happy. We produce some high-quality students out of the high school and elementary schools. Other than that, I got none.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and go to Alderman Franklin, so I don't forget about her.
Hi there. I wanted to tell everybody that the block party was a huge success. On the tenth of this month, we had a lot of people there. The weather was wonderful. It cooper, Mother Nature cooperated, so we had a great turnout. We had quite a few and junk in the trunk, and the kiddos had a good time, so it was a good time had by all. I also wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday is the doggy dive out at the outdoor pool. So bring your forever friends with you and catch some hot dogs and some snacks and let them enjoy the pool for the last time for this summer. So it's for a great cause. We are raising money for the shade structures. And they will go in line with what is out at the outdoor pool, so, um, anyway, it's, like I said, it's for a good cause, so. And I also wanted to give a shout out to school, yes, is in session, so please, everyone, be careful with driving and remember that school buses are out and about as well, so. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman Franklin. Alderman Davidson.
She did it again.
She took it all. I shouldn't have let you go and then her.
School zones and school buses, thank you for standing. No, it's, it's very good. We need to make sure and let everybody know that I'm sure our officers will be out watching the school zones, so make sure you slow down to the prescribed, the limited school zones. We've got several of those around town, and also school buses, the signs and the lights are meant for purposes of stopping, not slowing down and not passing. So make sure you adhere to those restrictions for schools. It's for one reason and one main reason, and that's our children. We want to make sure that they survive going to and from schools. That's all I have there.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Turner.
I mean, it hasn't been said.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Fauch.
Your report.
All right, thank you. Alderman Dorhoff.
I just want to congratulate the two officers being promoted this evening. It's been great the last couple of months. We've had lots of new pinnings between the fire department and the police department, so keep it up. That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Milner.
Just kind of same thing. Today was our first day back to school. Everybody got there happy and safe, and as of five o'clock, everybody was home sound and safe. Please show grace and kindness to the bus drivers and the crosswalks. I watched people ride through the flashing crosswalk this morning. The kid's standing right on the sidewalk. Maybe more, just maybe, let's hope they're just out of the habit and they're going to pay better attention tomorrow, but please show some grace, because sometimes the buses are going to sit there for a minute until everybody figures out where they're going and what they're doing, but it was a good day.
Awesome, thank you. City administrator report.
Remember, September second, Monday, City Hall obviously be closed for Labor Day, so your Board of Aldermen meeting will be Tuesday night, September the third. Then the Lake Harrisonville Rise and Intake and Offal Project, we're getting close to the completion of that, dealing with the contractor on appropriate documents. The airport runway is moving along very quickly. They put in six inches worth of concrete last week alone. Paved about four thousand of the main line west of the runway, so it's moving. The contractor's really working on that pretty quick. Sanitary sewer contractor's two and a half months behind on that. It's been informed of liquidated damages from the city for being late. And so staffer continuing to work, try to get that project done with that contractor. Hopefield sanitary sewer project is getting close to being done. Glad to finally get that moving forward. And the South Commercial Extension Project, we're getting some, somemittals for project records and design drawings to date. World Street Extension Project, which I could tell you and announce all the stuff, but we're still waiting on MoDOT. And then they sent us an email today that did not make us any much more happier, so we're going to continue to push to try to get them to get this forward because staff is ready to get it going forward. The Missouri Highway Two Bridge, the no-rise certificate is what we've been working toward to get that completed. I think once all that gets done, we can be a little bit better about timing and everything. We're not going to meet the deadlines that they were talking about earlier on that project, so we will, once we get the engineer to get that stuff completed with the NR approval, then we can set that in a little bit better. Ash Street Project, the final design drawings to include the non-closure of Lexington Street. City staff are reviewing those final drawings. The Beckerdike Storm Project, staff met with the NR last week. James de Blue Larry, the six property owners are being worked with for the easements. And then the lead, lead service line inventory project, the MDNR's point of view, they, they feel everything's been completed and executed. And so we've held those progress meetings, and I think Matt said there's ten that he has to follow up with. They said they had lead, and we think some of them didn't have lead. They just probably clicked on the wrong part of it, but we're going to follow up with them on that. And then in the police department, the new central square software project went live last week. It's a, it's a three-year project, over a year to implement. Jeremy lost most of his hours of life last week. When you're going through an implementation and one of your I, key IT guys go out, guess who gets to be more the IT guy? Jeremy. So I think he slept three hours and, and forty hours. Wasn't that right, Matt? Jeremy, an hour and forty hours? But there was a, a good group of them with Mary Osterberg, Tim Michelson, Ariana Abbey, and countless others that worked on that. This is all the PSAPs in the county, includes the sheriff's office, Pleasant Hill, Belton, and Raymore. And so getting everybody on the same page to, to do this is like herding cats. And so we finally got to that finish line, but it really, it's twenty-six years of data that our city had to work with on that configuration, which was one of the larger years of data to transfer over, so. I want to tell Jeremy, I appreciate all the work he put into that, because you're also dealing with an elected ESP board in the process as well. And you know, it's not always fun to deal with elected people. But I want to also congratulate Sergeant Michelson and Detective Sumner. Park's been putting out more signs and rules, and voting signs. People say, why do we put those out there? Make sure people know the rules, and our insurance company wants to make sure we're telling people the rules, too. And then I want to congratulate Christina. The, last week, they were able to get ninety-nine thousand in grant funds toward the hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar downtown traffic and parking study. So that's always good to get grant money to help take care of those things. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Your municipal court report, July of twenty-twenty-four is in your packets. Questions from the media?
The animal cruelty, do you put that off till September sixteenth?
Sixteenth, yes, sir, yep, all right.
I heard somewhere in there a second.
That's the work session. I messed that one up, so thanks for getting that straight. Yep, September sixteenth, we'll bring that back. All right, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. We'll take a quick ten-minute break or so. You can grab some drinks and snacks and.